If you all are going to speak or have anything to say on any of the items on the agenda or off the agenda, please fill out a card in the back and present it to the clerk down here, please. We'll get started in about two minutes. We're going to call the council meeting to order for February the 19th here at the City Council Chambers. Mr. Morrison, would you lead us in the pledge, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all attending tonight. Okay, our first order is to call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Randalls.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Welcome, everybody. We have a public participation card from Mr. George Sweetman. Oh, there he is. Come on up to the podium, George, and give us your name and get it on the record.
My name is George Sweetman. I reside at 7200 Point Seto Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida. And I have an issue with stormwater runoff that I'd like to talk to council about. I don't know for sure what's been done of late. Bob knows me for a long time, and he knows that I pretty much know a lot about this stuff. Many years ago, we got some baffle boxes put on pipes. All our drains hook into three pipes going into Banana River. And I'd like to know from the city what's been done over the past 20 years to stop the pollution going into the Banana River, which we all know is rampant. And as a city, I think we could be a model community if we would do some things prior to other cities along the coast here. Because I've read articles for the past two months on Save the Lagoon with all the money they're collecting, and all they do is talk. That's why I'm here to start talking a little bit about it. It's one of the reasons I removed myself off the Board of Adjustments from the city so I could do this without conflict of interest. With that said, I'd like to see if maybe you could bring us up to date a little bit of what the city has done so far with our three pipes. I believe one of them is being recharged, but if I understand it correctly, maybe a year ago or so, our former governor said we couldn't do that anymore. So if that's the fact, have we done anything to try and take nitrates out of the water? Have we moved forward in any one of those points? If not, we need to. We can build a city hall. It's beautiful. We can do this. We can do that. But the city's been polluting for probably 10 decades at least. We need to do something, not talk about it. And I think that's why I'm here. And I'm going to be here. I'm not going anywhere.
George, we welcome you with open arms. I think the city is doing an awful lot of stormwater work. And I'm going to let you get with Jeff Ratliff here.
Okay.
And he can fill you in on all the programs we've got going on.
And George, another really good source is if you look at our weekly update on a regular basis.
I'm not a computer guy. I understand that. I work on the water. When I come home, I'm tired, and I really don't have time to spend that many hours.
What you will find in brief, and I mean very, very brief, is that the city has exceeded all of the requirements for improvements, and we're well ahead of the curve in terms of what we've done to take, clean up the stormwater and those kinds of things. And an item on the agenda later tonight will include, hopefully ultimately, purchased land to capture some additional stormwater at a certain location in the city that currently goes through baffle boxes. But Jeff will be able to tell you quite a story that's very, very positive, and I think you'll be rather pleased.
I hope so.
No, I guarantee you will.
I'm initiating something here because I need to take this to the other committees that are trying to do work here. I read an article in the paper two days ago or three days ago where the commission or, no, Bovard County decided not to do anything.
That is correct.
And that's wrong. I know.
It's the county, but you get with Jeff, and he'll give you a full story of what we've done. And I'm very well aware, and I know you very well, and I can tell you, we are way ahead of the curve of everybody else with just a few things that we have done in the last three, four years.
Not a few, a lot.
Hey, Mayor, can I jump in real quick?
Go ahead.
I would just like to let you go into Jeff's office. You can, he can give you his contact.
I know where he is. Yeah, I'll start there.
Talk with Jeff. He's got the whole story.
I'll be around, but I'm going to be a thorn in.
He's the guy that does all of our capital projects for stormwater and drainage and so forth.
Yeah, and I will say this, that I do appreciate all that you've done, Mr. Green, but there are things that haven't been done that could be done. And when you can spend millions, our own city, and watch that still keep going in the drain, it's not good. It's not right.
We implement our stormwater master plan, which was updated recently, and we're on our second stormwater plan, I believe, if I remember that correctly. And if you take the time out of your busy schedule and do a little bit of homework and talk with city staff, we can point you to where the information is, but we're doing it. Yes, you can always do more. There's no doubt about that.
That's exactly right.
But if you look at what we are doing, have done, and what we're having in the plans, I think you'll be very pleasantly pleased.
Okay, but I got to ask you one question, sir. This is all done, isn't it? It's a beautiful building, okay? How long did it take you?
Pardon?
How long did this take? About five years?
From start to finish, by the time we did the property acquisition, the demolition.
I was here on the acquisition.
The cycle moving, yes. Yeah.
So I know a little more than you. I was here a little longer. But nothing's been done, and Bob will back me up in this unless I've kind of brought it up a little bit in the initial with the baffle boxes.
Oh, yes, they have. We're on second-generation baffle boxes.
We're way ahead on baffle.
We've already done that, and we also.
Get with Jeff.
I will. I will.
We can go on all night, but just talk to Jeff first, and then I think you'll have some information that you'll find very valuable.
I'm done. I'll be back, though, sir.
Good with Jeff.
Looking forward to engaging.
Thanks.
Hey, Mayor, just for the benefit of everyone in the audience that does go online, city website, citycapedanavale.org/sustainability is the top-to-bottom list of everything we've done in the last 20 years plus. We can go into depth if anybody wants to come meet with us. It is all online. It's in the weekly update. It's posted on social media. It is something that we are using to be the guiding light for other communities around us, and they are reaching out to us to see how we're doing these things. So it's out there, and we can direct people to it. I can print it. They can read it. They can take it home.
Well, like you said, he's not a computer guy, so I can't speak for him on that or his wife or his family, but.
Just in case anyone in the audience wants to go look.
It's all available to George, so all you got to do is come in and ask at the front desk, and they'll direct you right to Jeff, and you'll get the whole picture. Thanks anyway for the interest. We're all interested, believe it. No other cards, right?
No.
Okay, we'll go on to presentations by Mr. Zachary Halliford and his staff from James Moore. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Mayor. Thank you. Zach Halliford, partner of James Moore and Company. Also joined this evening by Doug Gillickin, the manager who worked on the audit and has the last couple of years. We are here to discuss the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018 audit. Just one big thank you as well before we start. Thank you, of course, to you all, the council, for the opportunity to continue working with the city. And a big thank you to John Melinda and the rest of the finance team for all of their hard work to really, you know, just be ready on schedule for both when we came out here in December, all the way through to wrapping up to be here at this meeting, as is the standard target that we shoot for for this presentation. Next slide, please. So first and foremost, to take a look back at the prior year, the city was awarded from the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is on the 2017 CAFRA. Basically, what happens is now that this document is complete, this will get submitted to the GFOA once again. We have every reason to believe that the city will be awarded this certificate again on the 2018 financial statements. Next slide, please. These statements, these are management's financial statements, and as your external auditors, we go in, take a detailed look at different areas to basically report on the fact of whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects as a whole. In performing the audit, we did come up at the end of the day with an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, the first of five reports that we issue. This is the best report that we can issue as your external auditors and what you would want to see here, that we are saying, yes, affirmatively, your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. The second report that we issue was what's a single audit. Based on your federal and state grant awards, if you go over a certain threshold, we have to go in and basically perform a mini-compliance audit, so to speak. So we went in, did this over your state award programs, primarily the SRF loans that you all have related to the draws during the year, and we had no issues there, and said that those major programs that we tested were in compliance with any material regulations related to those grant awards. The third report that we issue is on the city's internal control and compliance as relates to financial reporting. In this, if we had any deficiencies in internal control, compliance matters, or otherwise, we would report those here. We just have one comment related to capital asset reconciliations. We had a semi-related comment last year. There was a substantial corrective action taken, kind of on the ongoing process. There were still some challenges, primarily with the current accounting system that made it a little bit difficult, where we had to still have some degree of a comment. Really, the keys here is, you know, one, any actual expenditure activity, the budgetary impact, all, everything from that standpoint was properly approved. The comments, so to speak, related to just the year-end adjustments that have to be made relative to this report. The hope is also, I know you all have recently approved a new accounting enterprise system, that the go-live date will be later this year, and that hopefully should help alleviate some of the challenges that staff has had with the current system and the fixed asset module in that, which really is just not as robust as the rest of the system. So no major areas of concern there, but because of the adjustments and the overall true-up process, we did have to report a comment on this area. The fourth report that we issue is a management letter required by the Florida Auditor General, and in this, we look at a series of items, and basically if we have any exceptions to the standard areas they want us to look at, we would report those here. We had no modifications to that report. The only item that was addressed in this related to budgetary compliance, there were two of your smaller special revenue funds that, just by a couple hundred dollars, the, on paper expenditures exceeded the final budget amount. Some of that was just really a mix-up of some numbers that were backwards in that final budget amendment. But again, all of the actual transactions themselves were approved appropriately. And the final report is required on the city's compliance with state statutes over investments and investment policies. And in this report, we did affirmatively say that the city was in compliance with those specified statutes that we have to look at. Next slide, please. So to look a little bit at the numbers and where you all are at as of September 30th, 2018, the general fund, of course, is the primary operating fund of the city, so that's really what we kind of focus on, to look at those numbers. So your total fund balance or reserves retained earnings is kind of the private sector terminology that you would see. Your total fund balance is about $11.5 million, which government accounting standards require you to break that out between five different buckets. So to quickly touch on those buckets, the non-spendable fund balance, only about $3,000. This relates to anything where you've already spent cash, such as, you know, if you prepaid some expense or you purchased inventory, you can't go use that money on something else, so that gets backed out. The restricted money of about $774,000, that relates to your debt service on your capital improvement debt. Basically, there's sinking fund requirements where you have to set money aside for those upcoming debt payments. That's what that number relates to, so that gets backed out. The $6.5 million of committed fund balance is very similar to the restricted, but just a small difference in terminology because it originated internally. Most of this relates to your unspent debt proceeds, primarily on the most recent 2017 debt that was issued for the multi-generational facility and some other uses. So that money, while it's sitting there, it's not available for the general operations of the city, so that gets backed out as well. The final two buckets are really your available unrestricted monies. The assigned is very much like earmarked. So you have about $1 million that was earmarked, and in this case, was appropriated in your fiscal year '19 budget. So anything that you've earmarked gets backed out because it has been appropriated to potentially be spent in fiscal year '19. And then the unassigned is basically the residual after backing out those four other buckets. That's what is left, again, in available unrestricted monies. Next slide, please. So to look at the numbers and kind of how it compares, because just saying how much you have is all relative to the size of the city and that type of thing. So to look at kind of the perspective of this, the GFOA who issues that certificate of excellence in financial reporting, they recommend a minimum of two months of recurring expenditures and transfers out relative to your assigned plus your unassigned fund balance. Again, because those two buckets really consist of what's available in unrestricted reserves of the city. So when we combine those, we have about $4.1 million relative to what your 2018 expenditures were, just over $12 million. That number as a percentage is right about 34 percent, so pretty much double that minimum recommendation, very consistent with a prior year. And as we've talked about in prior years, and when I look at this personally, you know, it's kind of one where that's a bare-bones minimum recommendation that's thrown out there, and, you know, for the most part, all I work with are coastal communities, such as you all. I live in a coastal community myself. And I think being above that, you know, we've got hurricanes, there's many other factors that necessitate the thought that, hey, it might not be a bad thing to be above that minimum recommendation. You know, just the most kind of obvious that we've had in recent years, which you all were not impacted as badly as it could have been, so that was, you know, very good to see. But just on the hurricane front, many cities that we've worked with, most have received, majority of the money from Hurricane Matthew, which has now been about almost two and a half years ago, but Hurricane Irma about a year, four months ago. I don't know if there's any governments who have received any money back from FEMA relative to that. So just from having reserves, if you ever did have to front some money, even though a lot will eventually come back, you know, it's very good to have some of those reserves available, you know, so that you're not in a very difficult situation, should there be anything that we come across, although hopefully, of course, you know, that will not be the case. Next slide, all right. So a couple other just highlights, looking at other major funds. You know, your CRA fund has been one of the major ones that came on board in recent years once you established that, and we've kind of tracked that as there was a deficit balance in that fund the first couple of years. Most of that, again, was really due to the fact that you established the CRA and didn't really waste any time investing into the district, which, you know, we've seen some cities where they kind of establish it and just let it sit there. You all jumped right into it. And really looking at the revenue the last three years, you know, you can see just the overall positive impacts that we've seen in the district, where from 2016 to 17, your revenues almost doubled, and then you still saw about another 30 percent growth from 2017 to 2018. And those monies, you know, will just continue to be able to get reinvested within the CRA. On the expenditure side, you had about $63,000 of operating capital expenditures and then about $689,000, $690,000 going towards those debt service payments from that capital debt that was related to the CRA improvements a number of years ago. And then your ending fund balance was a positive $51,000. This was the first year in a couple of years that you now are in a positive there, so there's really, you know, no contingency where we looked before and said, hey, there is this deficit. If you ever didn't recover it, maybe in, you know, decades, it would have to be absorbed by the general fund, but, you know, that fund definitely, you know, doing very well just looking at the growth in that area. That does cover, yeah, most of what I have. If there's any questions, I'm more than glad to answer any questions anyone may have. If not, either way, thank you for the time and the chance to be here once again this year.
Anybody have anything to say? Angela?
Well, I certainly will. I would just say, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela.
Okay. Zach, thank you for you and Doug coming and giving us an hour of your time for each one of us today, if we wanted to, to come sit down and go over our markings. And you let me use the hour very good today. I just jotted down one thing. You mentioned earmarked. I wonder if the funds are certain earmarked in the future. I really would like to see that word be restricted or designated or something else. Earmarked sounds like kind of it's the same thing, maybe. But in the book here, you've got they're either committed to, restricted, or assigned. That sounds much better. And for the audience, those are things that we decide we got to do next year or whatever it is. So we put it aside and set it and assign it there by council and keep it. Is that a good thought?
Yes. Yeah, so the assigned has basically been formally designated to be used for a specific purpose. Really, just the key differentiator is that the decision could be changed. There's no external restriction saying, hey, you can't do this. Now, you've said, hey, this is our plan, so it's the one is where you could pull from the assigned if you had to, but it's already been set aside for this purpose internally. It's really the differentiation there.
That sounds much better. It was probably one of the best audit books, CAFRA books, that I've seen in years, and I told you that when I went in, that you actually absorbed or put in place many of the new Gatsby. Now, that to us means government of standards procedures or something. Every year, there's five or six new items that you have to pull out and separate and do, and all of them are in here. So you read the book. But thank you. All in all, it's very good. I spent quite a bit of time with it, and I understand it, and where I didn't, you helped me today. Thank you for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to say thank you to you and the entire James Moore firm and staff. I know everyone worked hard to do this, so thank you very much. Congrats for getting through another one, so thank you.
I just have one question. You mentioned a minimum of two months, 16.7. What is the range of coastal cities that you deal with? You don't have to give the name of the city, but where are they at in those figures?
Yeah, so we've seen probably the low end, for the most part, is occasionally, we've seen, we have one that has a policy of a minimum of 15 percent, and they kind of stick close to it. Rarely have I seen any under 10 percent. I think under that would be kind of be like, hey, where are we going with this? On the higher end, probably, you know, we might have some outliers, but probably 50 to 60 percent is the most common that we see as far as like the highest end of that. Probably if I had to say what's the range that 60, 70 percent are in, it's probably the 20 to 40 percent range.
That's about where we are.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everything that you've done.
Yeah, it's always been a pleasure for many years.
Likewise.
I'll do good, and you're very thorough, and I do enjoy talking with y'all when we meet, and today was a good day with you. Dan, good. Dave, you?
Yeah. It's just we need to accept the audit.
Yeah. We just need a motion to do the audit, accept the audit as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the annual audited financial statements and independent auditors' report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mrs. Raymond. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
For.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Councilmember Morrison.
For.
Councilmember Raymond.
For the motion.
Or Councilmember Randalls.
I'm next. She forgot you.
Most important guy.
Two Rs.
Okay, we went through that. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good job, as usual. Okay, we have an interview for an applicant for the appointment to the library board. Two applicants, Mr. DeVito and Mr. Lane. Is Mr. DeVito here? Okay. Need to come forward, sir, and talk to the attorney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of questions. One's a formality question. All the information in your application is true and correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the library board.
Prior to moving here, my wife and I were involved with Kulanis and a program called EduCare. We funded that for five years. We've been involved in that facet of the library. We use the library a lot, and I just thought maybe I could, as a permanent resident, be in a contributing manner, helpful.
Retired in a lot of time, right?
Thank you.
There you go. Counsel, let's start down there, I guess.
I only have one question. Is your wife's name Nancy?
Karen.
Oh, no problem. I knew someone named Nancy DeVito. And where are you from?
Most recently, Lincoln, Nebraska via Dubai.
All right. Do a lot of reading there in Nebraska, correct? We have really a gem of a library here, and I try to read a novel a week, so I think that you will find that it really is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful place to be, and I'm there often. Nice to meet you.
Rocky? Just walk your way down.
Just to welcome you, I think I probably see you occasionally in my driveway, and when you and your bride come by on your bicycles and give me an update on what you caught while you were riding, saying, hey, it needs a little attention. Thank you. Certainly, you're interested in the city. My question, your first choice was Community Apairance Board, Tony, right?
Correct.
Library was your second.
Correct.
Is that going to be challenging enough for you? I know you pretty well.
That, along with other volunteer responsibilities in the city, yes.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
No comments from me other than thank you very much for taking the time and giving it to the city.
I concur, and thank you for giving of your time.
I'd like to just thank you. I know there's a lot you can get involved in just other than the library. We have different activities that, as you're well aware of. This guy just planted 10,000 sea oats this weekend, last weekend. We have all kinds of little programs.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you just check the website, weekly report. Do you see it all?
Everybody.
I'd like to personally thank you for anything, anything you do to help.
Thank you.
We all appreciate it. Anybody else have anything or nothing? Okay. We'll have a movement here a little bit later with it. Mr. Lane, are you in the audience? Yes, sir. Come on up, please. Who's that guy from Canello Beach Boulevard, right? Yeah. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Same two questions. All the information in your application is true and correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and please explain to the city council why you would like to serve on the library board.
Well, I find that's one of the enterprises in the city, that it's Well, I find that's one of the enterprises in the city that is well-supported and is well-accepted by the public. It's a happy place to come. There are many other interactions in the city, but this is well-respected and much-needed. And I see that as the school population will probably grow, it'll be another welcoming function of the city, and it should be fully supported because of what it pretends: great futures and a love of learning, and it's a wonderful place to be.
Anybody come in? Just come back this way.
Other than thank you very much, and was this your first choice?
No, I had many choices. I've only been down here for two years, so I'm feeling my way. I'm full-time here two years.
And where are you from?
New York.
Where? Which city?
Right outside of Manhattan, up in Rockland County. I've been in Bergen County and Rockland County, if you know those areas.
Thank you. We're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Jared, I just want to say thank you. For the audience, they don't have the paper we have in front of us, but out of nine choices, he chose all of them. Gave them numbers of priority, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
Well, that's easy, because I've done many things in my life, and I've done them successfully. I just have to be open, and I stand on broad shoulders of those who are around me, and if I'm open to learning, I can succeed.
Wow. I won't give your email address away, but it's an envy.
I thought about that email address, and I was reluctant to use it because, well, it says retire Elaine, but I'm really not retired. It's from past colleagues of mine that were always emailing me for advice. I'm retired.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming our way, and I've never seen an email address like that, but it's a keeper.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I appreciate your commitment to the city. My daughter goes to Capeview, and I think Mark Twain said the quote, "You triggered this in my head. Don't let, you know, school get in the way of your education, and the library is an opportunity for you to go above and beyond what they're getting in school, getting a great education there." But they're hungry at that age, fast learners, and just thank you for serving and helping with that environment with Mr. DeVito as well.
Well, thank you. A hope you reminder of Abraham Lincoln's quest to return books and get books out of the library. It was quite remarkable, his love of the books.
I met you several times at your breakfast club, Mr. Lane. I think you'd be a...
It's Al Mo's Breakfast Club, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's the driving and motivator of it, and we're lucky to have him.
Right. I think you'll do an excellent job and welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do look at your background, and I think you, kind of admire you for what you've done. I also would like to welcome you to the city library board.
Thank you, sir.
And anything you can do to help, volunteer, arms are open.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you. Okay, we'll move forward.
May I sit?
You're good, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Stick around for the confetti and everything.
Absolutely.
We'll be doing that. Okay. Next thing was move on to the consent agenda. We have three items. Does anybody care to remove any of the three items? Hearing none, we'll move for a motion.
Mayor, I would move for approval of the three items under the consent agenda. I read them and find the act reported.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Mr. Raymond to accept the consent agenda. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Congratulations, Mr. Bass.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations to our new appointments, Mr. DeVito and Mr. Lane. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Ordinance number one, 2019. This is a second reading. Mr. Attorney?
Okay. This item, number four, actually consists of two ordinances and a unity of title agreement involves the property at 8811 Seashell Lane. Property owner seeks a comp plan amendment to the future land use map and a rezoning map amendment in order to basically allow the construction of a single-family home on three current townhome lots of record. This is second and final reading, and like we did for, at the last meeting, I'll go ahead and read in the titles of the two ordinances first, and then you can, the council can conduct one public hearing to the extent necessary to accept comments regarding the proposed ordinances and unity of title agreement. First ordinance is ordinance number 01-2019, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of certain real property located at 8811 Seashell Lane and more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, from C1 commercial low density to R1 residential low density, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The rezoning ordinance is ordinance number 02-2019, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, changing the zoning map designation of certain real property generally located at 8811 Seashell Lane and more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, from C1 commercial low density to R1 residential low density, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions and severability and an effective date. And this is second and final reading of both of these ordinances, also a public hearing item, and the unity of title agreement is also in the agenda package. It's recommended that ordinance 01-2019 be conditioned upon the applicant signing the unity of title agreement. Mayor?
Okay, counsel. Anybody have any comments?
This is the last one.
I went through it last month.
After it goes to the audience, I'll make a...
Right. Anybody else have any comment up here? Okay, we'll move for public discussion. Mr. Warren's in the office. Yeah, there he is. Did you have anything you want to comment, sir?
Uh...
Your item.
Um, ready to go.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to say on this ordinance or two ordinances? Hearing none, we'll come back to the dais, closed public discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to adopt the ordinance number 02... Let me press my magic button here. I would move to approve the ordinance number 01, 2019, on the second reading with the completion of the unity of title included in there, if it isn't already done.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion to pass both ordinances, 01, 2019, and 02, 2019, along with a clarification of the unity title. As made motion by Mr. Randalls and the second by Mrs. Raymond.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Go ahead, Lieutenant Dennis. Okay, item number five is ordinance 05, 2019, adopting the International Property Code. Mr. Garganese, second reading.
I've been through pages, because my bookmarks aren't working on my iPad. Can't find one either. Oh, here it is. Ordinance 05-2019, ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended herein, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance, is also a public hearing item, and the first reading that the ordinance passed, of course, the council had several comments regarding the proposed ordinances, ordinance, and there were several amendments that were made between first and, first and second reading to clarify a few points, and they're stated in the agenda item. First amendment was at language was added to clarify that the city council will be responsible for appointing the primary special magistrate that would be handling cases under the International Property Maintenance Code. However, the city manager will also have authority under the ordinance to appoint secondary and alternate special magistrates on an as-needed basis in situations when the primary special magistrate has a conflict of any kind, is unavailable on account of illness, disability, or death, or the city's caseload temporarily requires an additional special magistrate to handle cases in a timely manner. The ordinance was also clarified with language that the special magistrate shall, well, shall have the power to adopt administrative rules for the efficient conduct of hearings. Just to clarify that, we were just, we were referring to administrative rules in the text that was presented during first reading, and in addition, a clarification was made that the special magistrate, while being governed by a contract that will ultimately be approved by the city, as a baseline, the special magistrate may be terminated by the council or the city manager with or without cause. So that is specifically proposed in the text of the ordinance for second and final, in final reading. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Mayor? Well, actually, Mayor, I needed to bring one other point. There was one additional section that was made. If the council moved forward with the adoption of this process, there was a section that was added, added to the ordinance. There will be a certain time period that would be required to retain the special magistrate, yet the ordinance would have adopted the new, much-needed, updated International Property Maintenance Code. So the ordinance also provides that until such time as the city council can appoint a special magistrate, and we can get a special magistrate in place to handle cases, the code enforcement board would be authorized to handle those cases until such time as a special magistrate is duly appointed and is up and running to handle cases. That is being proposed as an alternate way of dealing with this, but staff felt that that would be the best way to handle this, because it would make the new, updated International Property Maintenance Code standards effective immediately upon adoption by the council. The other option, of course, that's available is we can delay the effective date of the ordinance for a certain time period until such time a special magistrate is put in place, but that would delay the ability of the city code enforcement officials to use the new, updated International Property Maintenance Code. So the manager and staff felt it was better to have that new code in place upon adoption, if that's the council's desire, and we'll use the code board until a special magistrate is appointed.
Yeah. Everybody good for that? Good with that? I think it's something that the city should have done a long while back. We did it years past, but we let about 10 years slide by on us, so we needed to bring this up to date, because it does have a lot of teeth in it for us. I don't have a problem with it. Oops. Does somebody have anything they want to comment on it?
No, except just to share, just to share your age on it. We were using the 1998 International Property Maintenance. That's an old one. And we've been using it until it went off the line. Now it's no longer on the line. It's not being served. But the little 30-second history on this, Todd, you can remember, you were the building official back in 2005, I think. Were you here then? That's when we tried to adopt the 2003 code. It comes out every three years, and we tried, and there wasn't enough interest in it. We were using the 1989 one then. And again, in 2009, you brought it up to us. Again, in 2010, May, and on and on. So this is a long time coming. And I guess for the benefit of the residents, how valuable this is, because this is new and update, and it allows even, since it's international, it still applies that all the Florida codes can roll into that and be adopted with fire, police, everything. So it amends them, brings them up to date. It's just a good thing that really is going to change the appearance of the whole city, I believe, in the next couple of years. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else?
I believe it's important to keep our materials updated. This is, in this way, we can enforce the codes that we have, and we can get our city up to standard, and I would really like to see some of the lighted areas being taken care of. I think it's a shame that we have some of our poor residents living in substandard housing. And I would like to see the magistrate. I think the magistrate's an excellent idea. This way, we won't have to have neighbors judging neighbors, as we have had for years and years on the code enforcement board. I think a magistrate will be able to use this document, the International Property Maintenance Code, to bring the properties up to standards. It really is not a great thing to take a bike ride or a walk and see some of the things that we have to see on a daily basis. Thank you.
Very good.
Consistent with what we said last time, this council has spoken at our strategic planning meetings, and code enforcement from the 2009 visioning has been a major pain point for the community. We can debate on what codes we don't like, or maybe which ones we do, but what we all agree on is if you're going to have the code, we have to enforce it, and this is a way to give staff the ability to do a good job for us and to be responsive with the magistrate, and I think that that's going to eliminate a lot of frustration with some citizens and allow the expedient response times that really isn't our staff's fault. It's a lot of laws bind us, and thanks to our staffer and attorney for working through and adopting this and getting us up to speed. So I'm looking forward to the results, and as this council always has, we'll keep an eye and listen to our staff and the citizens and learn where to make adjustments within this new code as needed. Nothing jumped out at me on my review process, but looking forward to see the positive impacts this is going to provide for us, so thank you.
I think this is long overdue, and I want to thank staff for bringing it to the council for approval.
Okay, counsel, we're going to go to a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak on this issue as far as what we're doing and what this really is going to be doing? If you don't understand it, we'll be happy to let you speak. Otherwise, nobody wants to speak on it, we'll bring it back to counsel for a motion, because I'm ready to roll.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Randalls would like to move to adopt the ordinance of number 05-2019 at the second reading as amended.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Mrs. Raymond to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code as presented. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Hey, we're onto our ordinance number 06, 2019, relating to the state revolving fund program. This is our first reading.
Ordinance number 06-2019, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the state revolving fund program pursuant to Section 2.12, Subparagraph 5 of the City Charter, authorizing one or more loan applications to be filed with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection in a total amount not to exceed $6,500,000 for purposes of funding certain wastewater and stormwater improvement projects, authorizing the loan agreements, establishing pledged revenues, designating authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance.
Thank you. Staff, I mean, the council? We have a couple of these ordinances to us tonight, so... us tonight, so we'll take the first one here. This is the one before us. I, I would just like to call, this is part of the attention, Mr. Sweeten, some of the things that you were talking about, George, are in this ordinance. That'll be helpful. And we have another ordinance behind this one relating to stormwater issues. So, council, you have anything in comment to make on it?
No, Mr. Chair, other than to extend your thoughts about this, because this is listed very individually itemized, all the things that we've done in the past year was the last time we borrowed money. I won't read them over, but they're itemized, what we've got, we borrowed money from a state revolving loan fund. And when we do borrow money, we have to pay it back, of course. But this, this amount of money is, we're anticipating borrowing to fix some items that continue to fix them. And the interest rate is 2.9 and 1.9 for the 20 years. You can't hardly get money for that kind of interest rate. So while there's an opportunity here, this will fix a lot of the items that we've started. Our sewers, storm sewers, and water, storm water, and septic, or industrials sewers are old asbestos, and they're 55 to 60 years old. And occasionally, we have, we just had one on West Central Boulevard exploded by McDonald's and out of the ground. And those are the calls you don't want to get in the middle of the night. And the, the infrastructure is the same age as the city. We became a city in 1964, I guess. And some of this may have been put in before or shortly thereafter. So it's simply replacing all these items. Most of them are replacement of forced main, replacement of lift station, replacement of gravity sewer pipe along Holman Road. It's things that need to be done. I'm not supportive of borrowing money just to be doing things, but in this case, your infrastructure is something that you almost have to. If not, you bear the consequences of it if you don't replace it when it needs it. And that, that's this. I've hesitated on it, but I, I see the need of this. I see where it's going, and I see the value in this. So I will certainly speak for approval of this at the first reading.
I'd like to say, I talked already about resiliency and sustainability, that we always need to be proactive, not reactive.
Yeah.
It's much better to plan ahead for our future and to make sure that our stormwater systems and our drains, et cetera, are all taken care of. We're way ahead of, of the ballpark here. We're way ahead of anyone else in Brevard County. We've been doing these things. George, I think that you know, my husband and myself, you see us on, all the time writing down piers with your crab trap, crab traps. And I wish you had asked us, and I would have given you the list of all the things. I've given it to many of our residents. And this is much better than constantly putting Band-Aids on. And it's too bad that our former councils did not take some of this proactivity that we
Anyway, we're moving forward. And just come down Center Street, you can see all the work that's been done and is being done since, I think, June of 2018, yeah. And it's been really wonderful things to see. So I'm very, very pleased and very much appreciate it.
Oh, if you couldn't hear me, I'm sorry. I don't need to repeat. I think I'm loud enough. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. This is, these projects are very important to address what I think we're, I echo everything that's being said. The one thing that does concern me is the amount of debt that the city is getting into. I've, you know, been, I, I see the value in these projects, and I understand what's happening. I, I hope that we can find a way to reduce the, the contingencies that we have in here. I see, you know, roughly 20% estimated on a $6.5 million loan. That's $1.3 million in contingencies. And I was very impressed with our financial position from the auditor's report, where we have, you know, roughly $3 million and, in, in the bank. You know, we, we dodged Homestead tax exemption that was going to impact us negatively for revenue. That revenue's coming in. We're starting to see impact fees, you know, from all the new hotels that a lot of people are outspoken about hotels, but hotels allow us to cover, you know, projects like sidewalks and the things that may be important to you, parks, or stormwater wastewater projects. And so I just, I hope that if I could make, you know, any recommendation, I would like to see the facilities plan in more detail before I, I made a decision on this. But I, I kind of understand. I mean, you know, you, you sometimes apply for a loan to, to get approved for, you know, what you need, but we're, when we're at $6.5 million added on to what we have already, it's going to take us over, when I spoke with staff, $22 million in debt. And that's a, it's, it is low-cost money to Councilmember Randalls' point. And, you know, rates are, are good, and I understand that. And if you're going to justify it for any project, you know, these are the ones that matter. But there are citizens that are concerned about our future. Were we able to keep taxes, our millage rate low when we take on debt? And we, we do have our rates, our utility rates coming in and fees, and that's just what I'm wrestling with today when I'm speaking with some citizens and understanding that this $22 million, if it was all to hit today, by the way, if we pay some down, will take us out to 2038 in debt. So I don't, I don't say that to scare anyone. I say that to say, we need to know that. We need to know what we're voting on today, and it's for, to, to take us to this level. But in return, when I read through these projects and I got a tour of the ways, the facility and saw some, some things on this document that, that are going to be able to come to life, if there is a way for us to, to lower the loan amount, that would certainly make me more comfortable. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the public if anyone has anything to say, learning more from what council has already shared and what we can, and, and listening to staff. And want to approach this with an open mind, but as I've always been concerned about this, the money side, it takes money, and if we could do it with less, I would get on board. And I know staff is working hard, and I say that humbly. I know you're trying. So that, those are my immediate combat, comments in regards to my concern. In, in short, the facilities plan that I got a chance, it's in the draft stages now to look at today, really broke down some of the different options that are available that the consulting firm did for us. And staff summarized it very nicely for us on kind of some of the picks. But when I get in there, I, I wish I had more time to review that prior to asking for the financing, but if, so it makes it a tougher decision. So that's
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, there's a number of things that probably we need to drill down a little bit and clarify. First, in the, this is an ordinance that authorizes the debt. And there is a second reading on each one of the ordinances that you have tonight dealing with debt. The debt in this particular situation, the total debt is roughly, when considering the second agenda item, would be 8.8 million plus the 6.5. And so that ends up being, let's just round it at, say, $16 million. That's an obligation of the enterprise funds only. That is not a city obligation as such. It's an obligation of the wastewater enterprise fund and the stormwater enterprise fund. Okay. And then when we talk about the total debt of the city, what is being said is, is accurate, but I'm going to have to parse a little bit. The two other loans that we have that total, the multi-gen facility project and the cultural center, as well as the city hall and part of the wastewater treatment plant, that does not pledge the city's avalorum tax revenues whatsoever. The proceeds to pay those loans back are derived from state revenue, sharing funds, franchise fees, utility taxes, and a number of sources. What we must remember is we were very prudent when we did those. One was at 1.99%. That was the earlier financing. And then the second one was 2.05% interest rate. From an overall point of view, those loan rates are less than the inflation rate typically. So we've had the use of the money in very high detailed present value, if I may say, when that dollar was still worth a dollar, and we're paying it back over a 10-year period, respectively, for the two loans. And we're paying back at a rate that's less than inflation to start with. And additionally, when, when we put all of the pieces together, we had the advantage of getting the asset and using it now or earlier than if we were to attempt to pay cash, because if we pay cash during that time period, inflation's going up, construction costs are going up, labor rates are going up, insurance, pretty much the full multitude of things. The first loan that went for, out of the, we'll call it the general government account, that pays off, I believe, in '24, '25. So that is already paid down substantially now. That obligation goes away in its early, in somewhere around 20, I think it's 24, 25 time period, and because it was only 10 years to start with. The other one that we had, we're having some angst about was entered into in 2017. So 10 years from then tells us when, when that expires. And so there will automatically be an improvement in the city's financial condition on about '24, '25, because the principal and interest payments will no longer be made on the expedited payback of that debt. And that will improve the city's financial position. Off the top of my head, folks, about a little over $600,000 a year will not be consumed by that debt payment alone. The other thing that I want to clarify and be sure we're all on the same page on is those prince, those interest amounts under SRF, et cetera, that's not to exceed for ordinance purposes. The monies that we expect to get from SRF will probably come in overall, assuming this goes forward, at about 1.5% interest rate all in. And now those are 20-year notes. Admittedly, that's the enterprise fund that's paid solely out of the rate structures of, and the revenues flowing through the system. The SRF program only requires us to have 1.15 coverage right now. If we were to have to make a SRF payment on the combined loans, our overall coverage is about 2.8, 2.7 times coverage. So mathematically, we have almost two and a half plus times the money available flowing through the system to pay it back. So that's a very solid financial position in that regard. When we go a little bit further down that path, and I think you, this will, should be music to your ears, when we ask for you to authorize us up to $6.5 million, the way the SRF program generally works, and I use generally as a very broad statement, first, we borrow enough money to go through the engineering phase. Then we borrow enough money to go through the design phase, essentially. We go through a number of different steps. Eventually, we get to the construction phase. So it'll be several years down the road before we're actually incurring the entire obligation. Meanwhile, during that period, we'll be paying down the other SRF loan, just as we'll be paying down those that I refer to as general government loans. So it may sound like a big number on the one hand, but when you start to break, really break it down, and it becomes the sum of its many parts and moving pages, if you will, it's actually not quite so bad. Because again, if you take my analogy in general, that if you borrow a dollar today, it's theoretically worth a dollar today. But three or four years from now, with 3% inflation compounded, it's only worth maybe 90 cents or less. And, and it's called intergenerational financing. It's very common. That's what we do when we buy a house. That's what we do when we buy a car. It just has a few more zeros, because these are larger projects. But when you boil it all down, you're paying it back with cheaper dollars, and you're getting the use of the asset now. The growth and development in the kit, in the community, as time goes on, assumes greater and greater responsibility for the debt. Not the existing residents, but you have more payers. It's as simple as that. And that's why I heartily recommend these kinds of programs with, they passed all of the prudent analysis tests, believe me. And we also, you know, because that's who we are and how we do business, we spoke with our financial advisor, and, and he's very comfortable with where we are as well. And you may remember, you have one, and he weighs in on all of our projects. We, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want everyone to understand, these are complex situations. We're darn sure up to the task of dealing with them as responsibly as we can. There's a very sincere reason why we establish the contingency so high, because some of this stuff is so darn old, and I'm going to use the word decrepit, that we have no idea for sure until we start digging the hole and doing those kinds of things, what we're going to find. But believe me, David Green won't spend the money unnecessarily. And so we're being prudent, cautious, but I would hope to goodness that we will not need all of those monies we have set aside for contingency. But there's primarily, right now, if we don't need it, we won't get it. It's as simple as that. It's almost like a line of credit ultimately, to match up with our projects, our facilities plan, our city council approved CIP, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And trying to keep all the little things running together sometimes gives me a headache.
Only thing I would like to say, I concur with Mr. Green. If not now, then when? I see this loan's going to be 2038. I, with God willing, I hope to be around when this is paid. But I also like to see, we've had somebody speak today, and we can show what the council is being progressive in doing some of this work that's going to benefit everybody. Banana River Shoreline, we have people here from Puerto del Rio. I know they're going to be happy to see that done. And just making everybody's life a little better around the city. We, each one of these agenda items or one of these items is going to affect somebody differently. And I just think we are being aggressive and proactive, and that's what the council needs to do. Thank you.
I've said everything I probably said over the many months that we've been working on this. I just, I watch what other cities are doing, and I tell some cities things that we've done, and the expression on their faces is enough to tell me that they aren't doing anything. They think maybe doing a little stormwater retention area or something is a great thing, but we're, we're doing so much, it's unbelievable. Really are. And I applaud Jeff for what he's done. He's always got something on the agenda to look at, buy, renew, replace. He's always, he's always got something going. And I applaud him very much for that. And I'm always looking at things myself to see what we can do to better it. I, I look at the river almost every day. I go down to a certain spot, and I look, and the, the river is just as brown as it was brown last year. To me, I haven't seen a change in it at all. And I don't think there's a lot being done that could be done, and I can't agree with George, because they've been working on this Indian River Lagoon project for two years almost. And all I, all I see is meetings and studies. No actual movement. Demucking in Cocoa Beach is being done, but that was going to be done before they even started a project to save the lagoon. But I, I hope that what we're doing shows and kind of puts an impression on some of the other cities that maybe they ought to get on board. Get rid of septic tanks, fix the leaking sewers. Every day, you see a report from somebody sewer breaking. It's a, it's a major project. A lot of it's out of people's controls, but a lot of it is within our control and a little preventative maintenance, which I have to agree, this city haven't done for years. If we fixed something, it was like, put a Band-Aid on it for a while, as we all well know, we got by free years. But we're on a move now that I think that nobody else has compared to But we're on a move now that I think that nobody else is compared to us. And I'd like to hear from the public, if you want to hear, if you want to say something on this. Yes, it's a lot of money, but I always look at what people told me. You spend money, you've got to spend it to make it work. And I think we've spent it prudently, and I applaud Mr. Green for going out and getting interest rates less than 2 percent. I couldn't believe when he come back with that. Couldn't believe it. And that was his doing, so. Counsel, if we're not through, we'll put public description up and ask the public if y'all want to comment on this before we bring it back. George? Up to the name for the record, please.
Again, my name is George Sweetman. I'd like to thank the board for your concern in this matter. I knew about what was going to happen here, but I didn't want to speak about it. I wanted to speak of that, because I knew you were going to cover that tonight. A little bit of history, so that may make you feel better about what you're about to do. This is not my first rodeo where you are today in your history here. Let me back it up. Forty, no, 35 years ago, I moved here 24 years ago. 35, 38 years ago, we had brown tide then, where I come from in New York, South Shore, Long Island. And we said to the boards, you've got a problem. And they wouldn't listen, but they did finally. So with Senator Owen Johnson, we put a, tried to make a law, rule, whatever it was at the time, to outlaw nitrated fertilizers, because we knew that's what the problem was. That was the Baymen knew, but no one else knew what was going on. Well, it took them 22 years to pass that. That's a long time. And here it took, after I gave all that information to Jim Wymer with Florida Today, I'm giving you a little history of what I've done, okay, and what's happened. Well, they finally passed it here, board, for five months. Well, that's not enough, because nitrates don't only go in the runoff water, they go in the ground. Where do you get your water from? Jeff, right? You've got nitrates in the water. Your groundwater, your groundwater becomes polluted. I'm getting off the subject a little bit. But if you were to spend this money now, they waited 22 years. But in that time, we talked into sewers. So all the South Shore, Long Island wound up getting sewers. That's what needs to happen here. And the way they did it was really unbelievable. They put a little bit of tax on each property. Big the property, a little more tax. And that's how it was paid for, but they had to do it by the county. And if you're dealing with a municipality like our city, you can't afford to do it. But if you do it on, you guys talk to other people and do it on a whole, it works. That base come back unbelievable. After they passed that ordinance, three years later, they had their best set of clams, their biggest set of scallops, it just came back, and the grass was growing to the top. So sewer's the worst. Anytime you put a sewer, like we have down here in Cocoa Beach, where you have a sewer, septic systems, okay, and a golf course, you've got a bomb. And I'm not saying that because I don't know, I know. But how do I tell people that make laws that, or rules, or ordinances? It's very difficult. That's why I came back up here. I just wanted to say that I think a yes vote for this is the smartest thing we could do. Mr. Green got this wonderful interest rate. I only get a half a percent if I have money in a savings account. And you're giving you money for, what, percent over that? That's a win-win, the world we live in. To do it five years from now, it could be seven, eight, 12. It's gone to highs 18 percent in four years, years ago. I put all my money in the bank, CDs, back then. So it's the right thing for the city to do, no matter how much you have to pay and for how long. You buy, rent a house, you buy a house for, what, 30 years? And you're not afraid. You can't be afraid. Because if you have to fix those sewer problems later, the way they're going with the rules that they want to pass, you're going to be fined if you have a spill, and the numbers are going to be crazy, because I'm for that, because if you don't vote for this, that's the way it's going to work. And I know that for fact from up north. I'm trying to give you the history so that you feel better in your yes vote. Hope I said it right.
All right, George, thank you.
I don't talk this much in a week.
Mayor, I'd like to say, George, we've talked about this, and I know you spend your life on the water and make a living on the water. So you have seen it change. Let me get this magic button. You've spent your whole life out on the water in a boat, doing crabbing and, and so you really have seen it change in the years you've been here. And I guess probably we have too, not being directly on top of the water, but we can see it. But thank you for the input, because I along with maybe some of you have talked to the people at Puerto del Rio and other condominiums that express their concern about, hey, we're scared. You know, you're borrowing more money. And as late as last week, I talked to them, the group there, and shared with them that we look at it, we get some information, and try to come across with something. I guess that I look at Mr. Green, you mentioned something to me earlier today, and I had the chance to talk to two CPAs today about this, about, you know, what money and where are we, and how much can we spend? There's kind of a rule of thumb of the percentage of your income that can go for long-term debt. And I don't, Mr. Green had told me that, but it was way up around 15, 18 percent. You should not exceed it, but I don't remember what you told me it was.
Right now, assuming we go forward with this debt, we're right around the 10 range, because, recognize again, it's a moving number, because we're paying off some of the debt, and this doesn't immediately shift in, but we're right around 10 percent, which is a very healthy situation.
Okay. Not that that makes it any harder to swallow the pill, but it's something that we're not way out of line. The question that I ask each person I talk to, do we have the ability to pay this back? And yes, we do. We borrowed, 2007, 2013, we borrowed the same amount of money and paid it back in just a few years.
And we actually paid that back just a tad early also.
Yeah, but we solved the problems, and it was hard then borrowing $8 million.
Yeah, but same thing again, it's a meeting, and we're talking about the ifs. Your pipes are going to break. They break in your house. I have them in my house. I have the plumber come, because it's dripping, and it ruins this, and it ruins that. It's not the fixing of the pipe that costs the money, it's what it ruins that costs money. And your sewer is going to ruin if you don't fix them now, and you're worried about paying this debt off by 38, you'll be to 50 if you have a major problem. That's a fact. And the reason, how should I say this? The program that I talked about that got passed, it took 22 years, they didn't pass it because of the brown tide. They didn't. They passed it for medical reasons. Not going to get into that. The paper knows about it, that they choose not to print some of this stuff, and that's not good. And I'm not going to say it, but I know what it is, and I'm just not going to talk about it. But that's why it got passed. They wanted us to get a plaque, the five fishermen that initiated the bill, I said, I'll put a thing in the paper if, in fact, you want us to get a plaque, because that's the wrong thing to do. And that's why I'm saying to you, we need a yes vote, not a nay vote. I hope I'm selling it, but it's the truth, what I'm saying. You can call Suffolk County and ask them about me or what I've done, if you don't believe what I'm saying. It's true.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me ask George a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. George.
Mr. Sweetman, I've enjoyed your crabs. Thank you for catching them.
Anytime.
Yep, they're good. And yes, I'm for the water, and thank you for your explanation, Mr. Green, on, if you can pull that off, that'll be very impressive. We're rooting you on, and I think this is good, and I'm excited about all the improvements that's going to happen to get us there. So hopefully, we don't need all this money, and we can pay it off sooner, and we're pursuing that. These are incredible projects, so I'm voting, I'm supporting it, yes for water, for sure. Thank you.
Hey, come back up here to the dais if public's through. Counsel? Move for a motion. We're through.
I make, oh, 6219.
Mr. Chair, I, we're looking at item number six on our book here, and I'm reading the words so I can get it right, because there's so much hanging on, I think I'm not sure I know what I'm doing here. It's, uh...
I'm going to say that right.
Somebody gets ahead, but I think I've got it now. This is ordinance number 06, let me get that button.
2019.
This is 06, 2019. This is the first reading. We will have it again later, for our second public reading. And, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of ordinance number 06, 2019, at the first reading.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rendles and a second by Ms. Raymond for ordinance number 06219, as written. Hold the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Rendles?
For the motion at the first reading.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, that completes that one. We have another one. Ordinance number 07, 2019, and it's in reference to the SRF funds' first reading.
Ordinance number 07-2019, an ordinance of the City Council of the City, Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the state revolving fund program pursuant to section 2.12, sub-paragraph 5 of the city charter, amending ordinance number 01-2013 to increase the total authorized loan amount by an additional $800,000 for purposes of funding certain pending wastewater and stormwater improvement projects, providing for the full force and effect of ordinance number 01-2013, as amended herewith. Repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and effective date this is first reading of this ordinance. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? We're looking for another ordinance here in front of you.
I just have a quick question, I think. And if you don't know the answer, it's like, I think John actually explained it to me. I just want to clarify with counsel, I asked, this is essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, going to piggyback, I don't know if that's the right financial term, with the existing 50 and 50, 50, 50, 51 loans that we had. So therefore, it will fall under the same interest rate, the same payoff time period, and actually, yeah, so it won't extend our maturity date, the date we'll pay it off? It'll increase the principal slightly, but 20, 30, it'll be paid in full interest? Okay.
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes, because ultimately, this, Wes, the best way I can probably sum it up is, at the end of the days, this closes out ultimately those projects that have, that were part of the initial loan, and that deals with the overruns that we had with, you know, the surprises, particularly at the OX stage. That was, that was way beyond anything we could have expected with the wear and tear and the impact. Now, some of the other things that we're working on related, we were successful through Jeff's effort to get some grant funds to deal with, I'm going to call it demucking the mucking plant, so to speak, and really cleaning up the wastewater treatment plant more so, which will improve the capacity ultimately, as well as, again, go ahead and solve the, kind of the overall condition issues out there, and haul the waste away, and we should get a better product coming out of the plant. And I hate to use those words, but the sewer should be of better quality because of that particular project, the removal of the buildup over the many, many, many years. Yeah.
Thank you.
Way too much, I know, I'm sorry.
I can't help it.
Where's that duct tape? Angela, do you have a comment? Are you all right?
No comment, I'm ready to go.
Mr. Rendles? All right? Let me wake Rocky up down there.
On you, Rocky.
Rocky, you with us?
Yes.
On you.
Up to you, ready to? All right, you passing? You ready to go?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I thought maybe he was falling asleep there.
I'm looking at numbers.
How about you, Mike? You good to go?
I'm good.
I'm ready to call. Anybody in the audience want to talk on this one? Essentially the same thing, we're just adding a little more funding to take care of some other problems, you might say, that we can see is coming up. Proactive. Hearing nothing? Hold the roll.
We need a motion? I'll make a motion. Yep. Mr. Mayor, if I can make a motion for ordinance number 07, 2019, relating to the state revolving fund program pursuant to section 212.5 of the city charter, amending ordinance number 01, 2013, to increase the total authorized loan amount by an additional $800,000 for purposes of funding certain pending wastewater and stormwater improvement projects, providing for the full force and effect of ordinance number 01, 2013, as amended herewith. Repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and effective date on the first reading. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mr. Brown. Hold the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Rendles?
For the motion at the first reading.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, I see that concludes our agenda, which is, has a lot of good things in it tonight. Glad to be here. Counsel, we've got to go on to reports. Start down with Mr. Gargidese.
Tell the report.
We're good.
We'll let you go last, that way you can get out of here.
I always have plenty. I've been a busy one.
Cut a short.
I'm going to tell you what I've done this month. The media meeting that we had at Satellite Beach, that was on January 17th, January 30th. I read at Capeview School with some of our other council members and our staff. That was a great program. I enjoyed it. February 1st, we had Friday Fest, that was a big success. Thank you, Gustavo and staff. February 2nd, we had the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, and I did participate in that and the bike ride. That, again, was a big success, a lot of participation. February 5th, I went to the opening of the new Vitas Inpatient Care in Rockledge. That was a grand opening. I did that to support our Rockledge people, and some of us might need to use that hospice unit someday. We have an older community. Anyway, February 10th, the Mayor's Brunch, and the Central Brevard Art League had a beautiful show at our library, and one work was more beautiful than the other. As I said, I bought this great piece of red, white, and blue jewelry. February 11th was the Space Coast League of Cities Board Meeting. Again, I wanted to tell you that one of the main priorities was, of course, the Indian River Lagoon, and we also appointed the people for that to be on that group. I know a lot of people didn't want to be on that, because they have four-hour meetings, which we do not promote here. Anyway, they did set the priorities for that, I just want you to know, and they set all the priorities to take up to Tallahassee for the legislature, legislature session in, for 2019. In addition, we went on Valentine's Day, February 14th, to a wonderful program, the Space Coast Area Transit, and also travel and tourism. And we went to the Radisson and had lunch on one of the ships, and heard a great speaker, Kagayama, and he writes, "Love where you live." Very interesting man, talks a lot about cost versus value. He also says, my favorite quote, "People who know the cost of everything don't seem to understand the value of anything." Very interesting. People want to live where they feel that they have a good quality of life. We choose where we live. Many of us who retired, we studied where we were going to live. We made a choice. My husband and I could choose anywhere, and this is what we chose. We love Cape Canaveral. My husband and I could choose anywhere, and this is what we chose. We love Cape Canaveral. I think everybody knows that. Now, I think I've been a great cheerleader for the city. In addition, as I said, I do try to support all of our programs. And I do have one, I hope to God, is the final poem that I have written for tonight.
Nice hear it.
All right. It's not great. Cape Canaveral has a new poet laureate, but our residents haven't heard from him yet. And this is the first for Brevard County, and we don't have to pay a bounty. I should put my glasses on. Launches, lunar landings, literature, and more. We now hope for poetry galore. The space between is in the groove. Our city is truly, truly on the move. And tonight, we do have Mr. Tom Bass here. He might have something special for us, too. Maybe we have enough time that we can give him some time so that we can all hear what he has to say. Hopefully, we'll hear him at Friday Fest. I suggested that he get to do something there. Thank you.
All right, wonderful.
Okay, I will follow with three in addition to them. Our local VFW Veterans Group and American Legion put together over the weekend a cancer walk. And they started at the VFW, went over to Pointeeta, went down to Lincoln, which is where the Legion is, had breakfast, and came back. And those two small groups of organizations called the mayor, and he asked me, or he couldn't be there, so I went, gave a check for six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars that they raised in his little cancer walk, walking three, four blocks to the Cancer Society. But the real good part is, it stays in Brevard something. And I didn't know that when we do cancer walks, normally it goes up to the pink organization for breast cancer, and away it goes, and we never see it. They, they were able to put all this in a, a fund here in Brevard County, which not only is for ladies, but also for men, because men get prostate cancer and on and on. And it'll provide transportation. So this is a real success. Mayor, the mayor was obligated. They called me, says, "Come down and get your picture and thing." It wasn't, but follow up with, with this thing. This was a great opportunity. It's already been discussed. We were out on the carnival for a tour and, and lunch. And from then on, I went to a TPO meeting. That's a little different thing. They let us sit at the captain's table, and so we could get out and Transit made sure we go down. The designs are out. We got a copy of them. It was a five-twenty-eight corridor. I give it to the council and to everybody. It tells where we're going, when, and what's happening as of now, but it changes constantly almost. I serve on a little Brightline committee. And indeed, they have exercised their option for the strip of land south of five-twenty-eight for the Brightline train. They had an option on two hundred feet there all the way to Orlando, and they've exercised it. And that means they're coming because they're negotiating the price of the land. And the Expressway Authority has also taken another two hundred feet south of that, over in the Desiree Ranch, where you see the grass and the hayfields. So that means our little five-twenty-eight is gonna be open probably for a pipeline going to Orlando Airport to eliminate some of the trucks that go over there, because you couldn't put a pipeline in a high-speed rail outlet. So things are moving along. You're up, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. Quick update echoing some of the tourism and Transit Summit was a hit, very well attended. And I got a chance to meet the execu, our new executive director for Space Coast Office of Tourism, Mr. Peter Cranus. He is excited about Cape Canaveral. He used to live in Cape Canaveral and learn, you know, his background. And he said he's trying to move back to find a nice beach property, and we would love to, to welcome him. But he was talking more importantly about some of the, you know, the activities that's gonna happen here. And Cape Canaveral's on the front row seats. I mean, we are seeing it happen and excited about what he's gonna be able to bring here and help what we're already doing within the community. Sea Oats was another one of those events that's very self-rewarding, you know? When you plant sea oats, it's one of those things. I was talking to one of the early guys who's been doing the sea oats for a long time, said you can always come back and, and see what you did. And when you get the kids out there and you, and you put the sea oats down, it's very self-rewarding. And I don't know how many thousands we're up to now, but through the years, just wanna thank the staff for persistently staying on that. And it's getting more fun every single year, so thank you. The time slot's gonna have to get shorter, though, because it was so well attended. I mean, I think they allocated eight to eleven and...
We'll just buy more.
Yeah, there we go. Buy more sea oats. So it was a hit. People from Titusville came. I was texting them. They said, "Yeah, we'll be there tomorrow." And, you know, I had to, I had some of the last sea oats, and it was like seagulls, all the people around me. Like, "We wanna plant them." And I'm like, you know, rationing them out at the end. A good problem to have, so thank you there. Science Fair at Cape View Elementary, and it is always a hit to see what these little scientists are coming up with. There's some stuff I think City Council and our staff should look at there. Some ideas coming through I wrote down, took some pictures. Reading with the students was awesome. Thank you for putting that together, Molly, and everyone who contributed. It was one of those selfishly feel-good moments to see the smiles on those kids' faces. I read The Miraculous Pencil. It's a good book. Check it out if you haven't read it. And the last, just thanks to staff. I think I've reached out to everyone and, you know, everything I needed yesterday, right? And so the other day, I broke my own rule. You know, when I first got elected, I said, you know, "I'm only gonna email between, you know, no later than nine or ten o'clock at night." And I sent an email the other night at eleven-thirty, midnight, to, to Josh. And, you know, he didn't even put my phone, and he's emailing me right back, so thank you.
I don't sleep.
I'm texting Gustavo, and he's, he's got his, he's trying to enjoy his Friday off, and he's calling me back. And you guys are making me look good. A lot of citizens just wanna go to their council members and ask questions. We tell them to go report a concern. They wanna talk to us. And when we submit it into you, thank y'all for turning it around very quick. Responsiveness is important, so thank you. And that is it. Thank you. Love. Happy Valentine's Day. We love y'all. Thank you for participating.
Okay, I just wanna thank the city staff and Gustavo for the excellent job they've done at the Cape Canaveral Little League field. I think we have the best-looking field there. The policy is, when the Space Coast Little League, there's no kid left behind. We see so many kids running around the city that don't have structure. We're gonna give them that structure, and we're gonna make sure that somebody pays for their mitt and pays for, gives them the opportunity to go out there. And I just wanna thank Gustavo and his staff and the city for everything they've done in that field. It looks excellent. Also, on March second, Space Coast Little League will, will be having their opening day, coaching the Space, the Cape Canaveral team, so hopefully, we can start off with a win. And also, I'd like to say, Cape View Elementary, I like what the city has done to assist in their endeavor with the playground, which can be benefited by all the cities, all the citizens of Cape Canaveral. I just wanna thank staff once again for everything they do.
Good report. I ain't got anything to say. No, I just, I did go to a couple of events. I had two conflicts at one time, and I did get by the cancer walk, but it was basically almost over with. I saw you down there. I had, at the sea oats, I was there, and I had, I had something else I was at. And then I went to the cancer walk again and went by there. And I did, attended the Friday Fest, which was a good event all the time. It's, I don't know if y'all have ever not been there. You need to go by and check that out. That's a lot of fun. Mayor's Walk is gonna be next weekend, I believe. We got a, an event, so many things in my head. I did have, we did have our opening thing March, or February?
Second.
Second, was it? No, it was the first week. But anyway, it's, it's a fun event, and we need to get rolling with that, I guess. I know we're gonna be walking, but I'm gonna be riding my bike. I have a little problem with long walks. But anyway, I'll be there for that. Wish everybody a good upcoming week and endeavor, and I'm gonna let Mr. Green talk.
Oh, I have nothing to say, other than, I have nothing to say.
Can we please?
Mr. Green does a great job, really.
Is it possible to hear from our new poet laureate? One little thing.
We're getting to that. We're getting to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Anthony doesn't have anything to say, but Anthony, I'll speak for Anthony. Anthony planted ten thousand sea oats last weekend, all by himself. Anthony was out there at his beach where and planting sea oats with us. It was great. Great to see him out there. Okay, I would like to introduce our new poet laureate, poet laureate. It's Tim Bass. We just planned him tonight, and I'm sure he has something to say.
I really appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate y'all taking time to look over my package. And I guess just briefly, I, I do love literature. I love the written word. I love the spoken word. I think there's so much to learn. And do y'all have the package in front of you with all my poems? So if you turn to the one called Missing the Cape, I think it's the very last one. I chose it to submit because within this one poem or song, or whatever you wanna call it, it shows just really a myriad of, of literary tools. And as a teaching tool, it's really neat because it has assonance, alliteration. It shows use of poetic license through introducing vernacular. It has soft rhymes, pure rhymes. There are, of course, allusions all throughout it to various areas. And, you know, it hyperbole, simile, metaphor, so all of that is, is within just the couple, within a single page you have in front of you. That, that's not me bragging. It, it's me saying that it, the written word is so powerful, and if you teach especially the younger kids how, how to really utilize the written word, I think would be amazing. If you wanna hear me play it, I will, but if not, I know it's getting late, and maybe people are wanting to get home.
How could we turn that down?
So I, I should say that I'm much more of a songwriter or poem maybe than a singer. So you'll have to bear with me, and I'll try to do a slightly abbreviated version. Fighting the crowds whose lives shouts, I'm walking down Fourteenth. I got my name on a cubicle while you're writing eyes on the beach. The Potomac flows the Atlantic, so my thoughts float to your reach. Sometimes I swear the salty air is all I need to breathe. I wish I had my feet in hot tide and I was there with you. The snow don't fill like sand on my toes, and it's far too much to do. So please send me a postcard, tapped with your perfume. Tonight and I'll look at the sky and share the same bright moon. It's your smiling, relaxed style, makes the capital lowercase. It's a small-town home and how you grow, there's a color in your face. It's easy to wish and hard to resist, like the lighthouse from the Cape. The folks all around, faces to the crown, and some finds its place. Cherry blossoms, I toss them all in the reflection pool. Museums, I've seen on the canehold, a candle to you. I'm writing this letter, 'cause I was better off down there. Got a one-way ticket on the song of a cricket, and it's carrying me through the air. I wish I had my feet in hot tide and I was there with you. The snow don't fill like sand on my toes, and it's far too much to do. So please send me a postcard, tapped with your perfume. Tonight and I'll look at the sky and share the same bright moon. So please send me a postcard, tapped with your perfume. That was written when I, I went to, I went on a year-long detail to DC. And so it was really written about me comparing DC to the beauty of the Cape and really missing the Cape, especially in February.
Thank you.
Gustavo, I think we have somebody for the, for the Congress Day event.
Oh, yes.
Where do you have that one? If you're interested in something like that, Tim, we would surely look to have you show us a couple things like this.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank y'all. I hope I do y'all proud.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Thank y'all.
Anybody else that you know I said before you could?
Thank you. Yes, sir. We'll see you soon. When does the Little League start?